Welcome everyone to the Planning Board meeting of June 24, 2025. We're in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room 1. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcasted by Area 58 TV. Please stand toward the flag. The first item on the agenda this evening is an A&R plan. The intent of this plan is to re-divide assesses map 49 plots 4-a, 4-1, 4-2, 4-3, 4-4, 4-5, and 4-6 into lot 1 through 7 and parcel A as shown here on and located at Fuller Street, Carver, Mass. in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District.
Good evening.
Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name's Ed Jacobs. I'm the President of PMP Consulting, Inc., and I'm here representing Hickory Hill Development on this seven lot, approved or not required, plan on Fuller Street. This is actually a re-division, as you mentioned. There's seven lots already there.
Sorry about that. That was our ride for tonight first.
As I mentioned, there's already seven parcels listed, as you listed, Madam Chair. We're just re-dividing them. All the lots meet the required frontage area and upland area for the residential A-zone. We've brought this as required in front of Conservation Commission and went issuing an ORAD on May 20th of this year. That's basically it.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions on the board?
I don't see the setback lines as established by the zoning laws on here.
We have the zoning cable off to the left, and we mentioned the setbacks on those.
All right. They should be on the lots. And my other question is, you got an NA and OHI through the Conservation Commission? The boundaries of which the Conservation Commission has control over should be listed on here, too. The 100-foot, and I also noticed that Lot 6, which would be, currently is 617 Fuller, has wetlands on it that aren't listed on here.
Where would those be?
Well, if we pulled it up on the state map, it'll show them quite clearly.
Lot 6?
Yeah, formerly 17 Fuller Street.
Can you point that out to me? Because this was, all the wetlands were located and the Conservation Commission agreed with our wetlands delineation, so I don't know where.
Mr. Bott, could you pull up this property up on the map?
For all existing and potentially proposed parking lots. And then Fussin' O'Neal can review the logistics and feasibility of what the applicant's proposing, especially with odd-shaped gravel lots like this. There's a lot of different ways that you could lay out parking. And then the applicant may want to request waivers for drive aisle widths or other items that could impact how many spots they could potentially fit. So in lieu of having Fussin' O'Neal try to estimate how many spots, I'd rather have the applicant propose their layout first, and then we can vet the feasibility of that.
Okay, thank you. I have concerns with the additional parking you're looking to add on the left, which is inside the wetland buffer zones, it looks like. And we did walk through the other additional parking you're proposing, and I think Mr. Glines mentioned we would want some sort of course sample to make sure that has...
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, that's fine. I apologize. We did walk through the other park, proposed parking area, and it appears to be all sand, so I would like our engineering firm to review the, whether it is able to hold cars if it rains out or if there's going to be a problem. And I would, I would think that there would be at least two ways in and out of that area in case there's problems.
I can weigh in on that as well. Andy Glines, again. Yeah, in our written memo, I'm going to include a recommended condition of approval that if that, I guess, westerly area is used as employee parking, that there's a condition of approval that requires the applicant to come back to the Planning Board and Conservation Commission if any improvements or restoration is done in that area. As I understand from the site walk today, the applicant isn't currently proposing anything, but I would like that reiterated in the decision letter, just to make sure that nothing's overlooked down the road or during, you know, the time period between any potential approval now and when the applicant comes back to the town. Regarding the other potential area, which is located in what's currently a grass field, based on the site walk today, it seems level and stable, but it hasn't been very dry. And I would like the applicant to do some test pits, probably to 24 to 36-inch depth, to verify what those existing soil horizons are and what the soil textural classification is. That's something that Beals and Thomas could conduct and then submit the test pit logs to Fussin' O'Neal for review. And I'd recommend having the Board of Health, a health agent, just observe those, just so that... My main concern is, I don't want to set a precedent in the town that other developers, applicants, property owners can designate a field as a parking lot in the future without some sort of vetting process on the feasibility of using that space. But based on the site walk today, there isn't any notable concerns based on the site conditions at present time, but as you all know, site conditions will change, especially if that field is used regularly for vehicle access. And also, I'd want pedestrian access taken in consideration with using that lot. I don't believe the applicant would need to include accessible spots in that lot if the current accessible spaces are, have signage, and they're at the entrance to the accessible route for the site, which I believe they are. But I would like the applicant to address that, just so that there's, again, you know, no precedent that although that lot is closer to some of the destinations, it's not necessarily, in my opinion, the closest location to the accessible route for the site.
Is the public well located?
Public drinking water well?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. Maybe someone from the fair can respond to that. Pull up a chair.
If you could just sign that and say who you are.
Hi there, my name is Ryan Roy. I'm the Vice President of Production for King Richard's Fair in Edenville. There are two current wells in use there. One is on the outskirts towards the, I guess, on the left half of your screen there.
I wonder if you could point to it first, because we don't have this plan in our possession. And I don't see it listed on our plan.
So there's, there's one here, and then there's one up over here.
There's one there, and where's the other one?
The other one is in the parking lot here, and it...
It's in the parking lot?
It's for...
Can you come over?
Sorry.
It's actually way down here, down here beyond, oh, sorry, the lots. It's blocked off with steel piers over, way over in this area.
Would you mind just telling everybody what your name is?
Yes, it's Matthew Pelletier.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And is all this outside of, well, it's the Board of Health's purview to overlook the public wells, and have you been in front of them? Have you applied for an application? Have you checked with them?
The fair has been working very closely with the Health Agent on all matters, in terms of water supply, wastewater, all of the kitchen and dining areas, everything that falls under the Board of Health's purview. They have been working very closely with them. And again, not any new structure within setbacks to wells. These are existing structures. So no new well permits, no new permits for existing permanent structures within setbacks is kind of the key takeaway here. And no changes to the wastewater systems on site.
Previously, there were trees surrounding that well. That's why I'm...
We just talked about what was in the plan. That's not part of the plan either.
Right, no, that's why I'm asking if the Board of Health had a chance to review, and there were weapons...
They have been talking with the Health Agent and covering all those matters that are in their purview, yes.
And I would like to see those recommendations when they're available.
If I may, on that note, Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neal again. I am going to request that those well locations are shown on updated plans, as well as the septic locations. Regarding approvals, Fussin' O'Neal will still defer to the Board of Health, but we do want to see those on the approved plan set, the existing locations. And also going to recommend the condition of approval, reiterating that if any changes to the septic system are proposed, that have to go back to the Board of Health to get that approved. Again, they would have to anyways, but in this particular instance, I just don't want to make sure, I want to make sure nothing's overlooked if the applicant in the future decides to no longer supplement the existing facilities with porta-potties, that they need to come back to the town for approval for any modifications to that, which would include, to a certain threshold, changes in flows to the existing system. So if they're adding fixtures or other sanitary flows to the existing system, they'd need approval for that as well.
Agreed.
No. I can't read this, and it's different. So what's this here?
That's a leach field, existing leach field.
That's an existing leach field as part of the septic system?
Yes.
Have we heard back from the fire department in regards to the distance of each of these buildings from each other and accessibility?
So that was discussed at both of the technical review meetings with the chief and deputy chief reviewing this. The applicant has been, again, in close contact with Carver Fire Department and Carver Police and Emergency Services. Carver Fire representatives were on-site today, and I don't want to put words in Matthew's mouth, but very satisfied with the layout of the proposed structures, the width of the roads. We've added some dimensions, and we'll add dimensions to the upcoming plan for access. Emergency access is acceptable and will continue to be labeled. It's a work in progress. There are things that are continuing to be updated, and when those updates are made, communication with Carver Fire is made, and they come out and do another inspection. So as of today, yes, they're satisfied with the ongoing work.
I expect they'll have something for us by next meeting.
I'm not sure that they provide a written letter for site plan review, since this is not a special permit hearing, but I defer to the planner on that.
Okay. I would, I expect Mr. Glines, our engineering firm, will review the bleacher proposals.
I can address that as well. Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neal again. As the applicant stated during the site walk today, they are planning on having the bleachers at the proposed jousting area designed by, basically, a bleacher manufacturer or vendor. But we will reiterate in our letter with recommendation condition to the Planning Board that that be certified by a professional engineer. Again, we'll end up deferring to the building official for that matter, but I think it's important to mention it in the potential Planning Board decision.
I do have concerns over traffic in regards to this site, but I expect we'll be hearing from the police department in regards to that also. And I expect that a traffic study will be done during the season this year.
Yes, as I said, the fair has hired a parking and traffic expert that will be designing, laying out, and reporting on that.
Sarah, I'm curious. How many parking spots were there in the previous location versus the new location?
Parking is always an interesting thing because of the size of vehicles.
Our notetaker is remote, so if you would just state your name.
Sure. Sure. It is Ryan Roy. Parking is always, it's hard to say exactly, because sometimes there's, it's a large truck, sometimes it's a very small car, and that will change the number of spaces available at the time. It is sort of a in-the-moment, live thing. You can have, you can have a base amount, and it will vary on either end.
Because I know in the previous location, that was, that was jam-full of cars. And I'm just curious, you know, if this new location, you know, will be as large as the previous location?
They are, they are very similar in size in terms when, when it would come down to that base parking with what we're, what we're hoping for.
Thank you.
I saw the number 2,400 parking spaces for the old, the old site. Do you know where that came from? Is that what that was based on?
I am not certain where that number came from. No. It is possible. Over the past, over the past several years, we've been working to create better parking and better traffic plans for all of these things. We've been working very carefully with the town on all of those matters. In fact, at the last Select Board meeting, for folks that have questions about the parking and the parking plan, things like that, feel free to check that last Select Board meeting out. We kind of went through it, were the hopes of it at that meeting. And again, we've been working with the management of the town to make sure that those things are in place and that there is better access for emergency vehicles and plans in place for all of those things, both, both for town folks and for guests coming into town for the fair itself.
Because my only concern is that they will park, if they're as busy as they usually are, will they be parking on the street outside?
Absolutely not, no. And that is, that is, A, that's not something that the fair wants anyway, but also it is a condition with the town that that is not allowed, and we don't want that.
Thank you.
Will they be mostly just coming into Rochester Road, in and out through that?
That is, that is the main drive-in, yes.
Recognizing that the traffic plan is encoded at this time, are there any other routes being considered, one for egress and one for ingress?
From Rochester, in terms of coming to the fair or leaving?
From 58, yeah.
Rochester is, is the, is the main focus at this time.
Everybody else, the board?
At its time, yes.
All right. So we'll open this for discussion from the public.
Don't you guys, the technical team, have a seat in front of the public?
If you could sign in and just state your name, please.
Hi, through you, Ms. Chair. Nice to be here tonight, meeting you all.
And your name is, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, I'm Nancy Cofala, sorry.
All right, no problem.
I happened to watch the meeting the other night on traffic. I mean, this just came to my attention. And I did have some concerns. I don't know if it's better just to read through them all, because there are like five questions. But I just figured I'd just read through them, and then, if that's okay?
One is all yours.
Thank you. What are the fair's plans to help keep traffic from using side roads which intersect to Rochester Road? That's one. Will the Middleborough streets such as Beach East or Pine Street have any signage to allow local traffic only? What is the plan to keep excessive travel off the new Medal of Honor Bridge? Will any detour signage or an officer be at these locations to move traffic along? And five, on the traffic study, could you include alternate routes as well? Meaning, we know they're going to come. Local is going to come down those streets in Middleborough. And then I just have a finished statement of the Middleborough streets are not wide streets, and the extra traffic may cause not only more traffic, but more wear and tear on the roads. And we just recently had those roads paved. I mean, as you know, as a town, it's very expensive to pave about two miles of road. It's very expensive, and that was just done. So those are my concerns.
Thank you very much.
Do you want a copy of what I have? Thank you. I'm sorry, and I appreciate it if you can look at the Select Board. No, I'm sorry, I have a meeting on Tuesday, on the first, and I can't attend. I have actually two very important meetings that I can't miss. I'm on a commission for something, and I'm on another board. But if it can be related to them, I'd appreciate it. I'd like to get some answers somehow.
It will be a joint meeting between us and the Select Board, I'm sure it will be brought up. Thank you.
I'll make sure.
Do you want Sarah to answer any of those questions? Mr. Bott?
I'm sure they're furiously taking notes over there. Why don't we just go through what the public has to say? And then when we bring them back up here, we'll have some more discussion about that.
Okay. Anybody else from the public would like to speak? You just sign that paper and...
Oh, sure.
Give everybody your name.
Sure. Okay, hello. I am Michelle Nealon. I live on Meadow Street in Carver, and as you know, that was a lot closer to the old King Richard's Fair location. I never had an issue with it. I've been in Carver for 12 years. Love it. I think we're all lucky to have King Richard's Fair, as well as, you know, having Edenville. But now that they've kind of moved and King Richard's Fair is taking over that place, I just feel like that's already been in existence, so I don't know where the questions are about the traffic. I mean, I've been to both. I have young kids. I've been to both of them. King Richard's Fair was busy, Edenville's busy, King Richard's Fair is busy 18 days out of the year. I mean, it's, it's well worth it, you know, having them in the property and having them around. I think all the local businesses love having them there. I just don't really see what the concerns are so much about the traffic. Edenville was already there, and they were quite busy as well. That was it. I just wanted to show my support for a great company that's done a lot for Carver.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Please sign the paper and state your name.
My name is Jackie Ferris. So my husband and I, we just purchased the house last Thanksgiving at 16 Pine Street, which is almost diagonal across the entrance to Edenville. So I've never seen King Richard's Fair. I've never been to a King Richard's Fair. I've heard mixed things from different people. They either love it or they don't like it because of the traffic. So I've never experienced that. But I did experience Edenville during the Christmas lights. I didn't have a problem with the traffic, and I know that's not, nowhere near what's I should be expecting for King Richard's Fair. But my only problem that I have is, King Richard's Fair or Edenville's entrance is right before my house across the street. I'm the first house right there on the big section on the right. And people pass by the entrance, and then they constantly are turning around in my driveway, constantly. So that's the only problem I have, is just people constantly turning around in my driveway. So I was just wondering, is there anything that they're going to do regarding that? And I know, too, when you're coming up Pine Street, that little curve, as you're hitting the entrance to King Richard's Fair or Edenville, the first one, there's a telephone pole, and I think that maybe if there's a light there, and it can shine showing that there is an entrance there, or I don't know if you're going to have a police detail there. It's just that, that's the only, my concern is, is people constantly, because the lights are constantly shining through my windows when they're turning around. And I know that, I don't know if you guys are going to be doing the Christmas display too, because I don't know if that's what you own for that. So that was my concern. And I'm hoping that the traffic's not that bad.
Have you considered charging them $10 a head for turning around?
I know. Well, you know what I did? What I did, we already thought ahead, my husband and I, we had excavators come and put big boulders, you know, in front, so people can't park on a lawn, you know? So things like that. But yeah, it's just, I'm just worried about the traffic. Yeah. But I mean, they did do streetlights. They put the streetlights up, so that was a plus, because it was really dark over there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else out there would like to speak?
Hi there, my name is Ariana Lopez. I am a lifelong resident here in Carver. I am also a, I work for a vendor for King Richard's Fair. I've worked there since I was 16 years old. My son is 17 and works there now. I'm here to, you know, support, obviously, my second home. You know, I grew up there essentially, and now we're moving to a new place and a new beginning, and we're obviously very nervous and excited because, you know, new things. And we're excited about this growth and this change, and, you know, how it could be fantastic, because it was great before. I'm just here to kind of help support, you know, getting the buildings as someone who worked for, who works for a vendor, who just, you know, had to leave what was our home for, I believe, 35 years. It was very emotional, you know, taking all of our stuff that we've, you know, put together for all this time. And we're so excited to get a new building, a new home, to, you know, essentially redecorate, to bring joy to kids, adults, everybody in between, you know, for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years, however long, you know, King Richard's goes. And so we're just really hoping, you know, for the, the support of, obviously, the community that we support, obviously. We wouldn't be here if there was no support for that. We want to, you know, bring great things to Carver. That's why my family moved here, you know? It's, it's a great place to be. So I'm hoping that we get these buildings that, you know, my boss is looking very forward to having a new home and starting this new journey with, with everyone else, just to, you know, add some, a little joy where it's been a little suck lately, you know? You want to make a little smile, even if it's just for one day, two day, 16 days a year. It's, it makes a difference. So I'm, I'm hoping, you know, for all the support and positivity toward this great venture that is hopefully going to get going, you know? So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Now, Tom, does she come back up?
Yeah, I think at this point, if there's anything you want...
Yeah, I think at this point, if there, anything you want to address? Uh, and I was out of the room. We, we did mention that your, uh, this is not your regular day job running the meeting.
Sure.
And by the way, you're killing it over there.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, yeah, typically that's when the, the applicant would come back, uh, make any comments, talk about what we're going to do, uh, ensure that we know what folks are interested, concerned about, and what they're going to have to provide for the board, uh, for, for an approval.
Thank you.
So, I guess, you know, at this point, we'll defer to the board for next steps.
So Andy has been working on, our Andy Glines, our consulting engineer, has been putting together his, uh, his typical hobby technical memo, uh, and I'll let Andy talk about that process at this point and fleshing out those comments.
Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neil again.
Uh, doing some additional work, some additional technical work over the off-season as King Richard's Fair sorts out their operation on the new site. Uh, so we'll be looking at, um, making a decision, uh, the board may look at making a decision, uh, requiring a performance bond from the applicant, uh, to ensure that there's enough money in that performance bond, uh, to, uh, make sure that it's worth their while to get back because frankly, they won't be able to open next year, uh, if we don't get those things done. So we're trying to get them to a point where they can open. Uh, we have, uh, you know, a great high level of confidence that, uh, we know, we know and how this is will operate, uh, but this won't be the last meeting about this. We were talking about continuing this to July 1st. It's a joint meeting with the planning board and the select board on another matter. I'm anticipating that the select board will amend their agenda to include this because there's a discussion about traffic and parking from the select board. Uh, and at the end of the day, when we make an approval, uh, for this particular plan set, uh, it will be, uh, for this season and sometime after the lights at Christmas go down, uh, after the epiphany, uh, you know, we'll be, uh, back in, in technical merits of looking at this, and there'll be more notifications to the public and more discussions over the winter. We won't be, well, we're wearing different hats on our next site visit, probably wool ones, uh, and, uh, you know, this, the process will, will go on, but we want to make sure that, uh, we're able to, uh, you know, uh, get this done, uh, to, for the applicants, for the town, and for the residents.
What I got. So with that, if there's no other questions from the board members?
I have two more questions. Um, will all the electric be underground?
Electric to the buildings?
Yes, all the new structures.
Um, I guess that's a question for Matt.
Matthew Pelletier. The electric will be underground. We have an electrician working with an engineering, uh, company to get that all squared away.
Excellent. And last question, um, I came from North Carver. When I put it into my GPS, it didn't take me down Route 58, it took me through the backroads of Purchase Street, so that's something that's going to be, take, have to be taken in account when it comes to the traffic, so people will be coming in from the backside of it.
Correct.
I'd just like to address that real quick. Uh, we, we do work with, uh, the police department who, um, puts in two Waze and GPS during, during that time in order to direct traffic properly. Um, with, that is something we will also, uh, this, to the, to the lady's point earlier, um, regarding backroads and streets coming in, um, we will be reaching out to Middleborough as well to, um, see if they can also work with Waze to make, to make 58 and Rochester Road the, the way in.
Great. Correct. That's all I have.
That's all he has.
Great, so I guess with that, um, the next step is I will, with the board's permission, coordinate with Andy Glines to get additional information on the plans. We'll send it through Tom Bot, the materials that we used today on the site visit and discussed tonight. We will add the items that we talked about and, um, we'll connect over the next couple of days just to ensure that, the, um, additions on the plan for this season's, I guess, conditional approval or whatever we're going to call it, uh, 2025 season, um, is good for, you know, what the fair needs for now, and then with the intent to address details or any modifications sort of in the next round of review. Does that summarize it accurately? Okay.
And with that, we'll have, we need a motion to continue the hearing until July 1.
So, can I get a, a motion to? Say again?
To continue the hearing till July 1.
To continue the hearing till July 1.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on King Richard's Fair, requesting a site plan review in the tourist commercial district, zoning district, to construct 40 wooden structures till July 1st, 2025, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, um...
Any new vote?
Okay, yes. May I have a vote, please?
Curtis Lake says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And just one other, uh, technical aspect, uh, the gentleman at the end here who is not voting on things, he's the planning board's associate member, and the planning board's associate member votes on special permits. It's a very ye-technical sort of thing, but I am a guy wearing a bowtie, so forgive me. Uh, so, uh, the associate member doesn't vote on site plans. The regular members of the, the, the elected members of the planning board do, but Alan is full, uh, agency to ask questions and, uh, seek out information as well. He just doesn't vote on things. So he's working hard over there, he's just not saying a lot of things about the voting. So, just for the crowd. Thank you.
And if we have the missing member at our next hearing, now that Carver has adopted the Mullen Rule, he may be able to-
Correct.
-participate if he's present on July 1st.
Yeah, so the, the Mullen Rule allows a planning board member to miss one hearing on one project. They cannot miss two and still vote. So at this point, with the chair recusing herself, there are, uh, three members who are allowed to vote if we voted tonight. Uh, if we're on July 1 and Mr. Robinson is here, there'll be four members to vote. It's a simple majority vote. A 3-1 vote is an approval. A 2-1 vote, even though that sounds like a majority, is not a majority of the board. So you have to have three affirmative votes in order to approve a site plan.
Thank you. See you next week.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
What is that noise?
Sounds like a whistling.
Yeah.
Hearing aid.
It's easier things, they're...
Oh.
I don't know what you call it, but the hearing.
Hearing aid?
Yeah, hearing aid.
I, I thought it was coming from up here.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering.
All right.
We're good?
Welcome back, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. All right, do we have any, uh, planning board member notes for this evening? No notes? No notes? We do not have any? Mr. Planner, do you have any notes?
Uh, I do briefly. Uh, as I've said to a couple folks on the site visit, I was in Northern California last week hiking in a volcano. It was warmer today than it was in the volcano. Uh, it's been dormant for 50 million years, but it was still a volcano.
Yeah.
So, um, we have a joint meeting scheduled next week with the select board for July 1, specifically to talk about the MBTA zoning. In my conversations with the town administrator today and, uh, inferences we made tonight, we will likely be, uh, extending that agenda or their agenda to include both Ediville, King Richard Fair, as well as the MBTA zoning, because there's some overlap between the select board's permits that they're giving and the planning boards, and I think it's just best to have us all in one room at the same time with everybody putting those concerns out there, so there's, the less things have a chance to fall through the cracks.
That's something that maybe we should do on a regular thing.
Uh, the, the town of Falmouth, in their charter, required the planning board and the select board to meet twice a year. Uh, if I made enough noise, they did it once a year. They oftentimes didn't do it twice a year, but it is a very good idea to have a regular scheduled meeting, uh, with the two boards. Uh, but this will be one of those opportunities. And if there's anything else that anybody would like, because we're going to be chatting with the select board, if there's something else that somebody thinks is something we should, you know, consider, uh, send it to me. The chair is the person who approves the agenda, so we'll see if there's any other points of light or bolts we want to include in that time over together.
Very good.
And Madam Chair, if I notified you already, I will not be present at any meeting.
Yes.
So no Alan on July 1. And did you get my phone call earlier when I called, as we were doing this site visit?
I, um, I'm going to call Michelle's.
Okay. All right, we'll talk phone numbers after this. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right?
All right, very good. Next, we have the minutes, 5:27.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 5:27, 2025.
I'll second.
I just have one little typo, um, in the first line, if it could, they could just add an S after my last name?
First line? You want to be Maris?
Um, not last name.
I wonder if you relate to Ted Williams.
Yeah.
Yeah, that spell check is, that doesn't do a good job with stuff like that, but, but you've been here long enough, we should figure it out by now.
No worries.
All right.
Yes. So Mr. Shea made a motion to approve with the exception of that typo, I would assume?
Yes, as amended.
I second it.
You seconded, very good.
We have a vote?
No, I'm not voting.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye. And, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Lake says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye. Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
All right, thanks, I'll go home, have some hydration.